Staff ready? County Council ready? Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I call to order the Ventura County Planning Commission. Please rise and face the flag. Place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me.
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Republic of Kansas. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. If the clerk would please call the roll.
Commissioner Calley.
Commissioner Adukas.
Here.
Commissioner Westner.
Present.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is called for public comments. Public comments are for any item that is not set forth in the agenda. Please understand under the government code, the commission can only receive the information, we cannot act upon it. Are there any public comments? Hearing none? Seeing none? We'll move on to item number five, approval of February 12th minutes, 2015. Commissioners?
Move approval.
I have a second.
I have a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oh, that's right. Oh, we've got to do the...
We have to do this?
Yeah. There we go. Oops. Yep. Are we too far ahead of you Denise here? Okay. All right, item number six, approval of February 19th minutes, 2015. Commissioners?
Moved, recommended action accepted.
Okay, I have his approval. Second? Oh, no required, all right. All right. Now that we have finished the ministerial items, we'll move on to, excuse me, LU-12-004, number 67 on our agenda today. This is an application for minor modification, and our staff person today is Mr. Jay. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning Chair Westner, members of the Planning Commission. I'm J. Joe Brawlsky, planning staff and case planner for the project before you this morning, which is not yet on the screen, but will be shortly. The project is a request for a modified conditional use permit to authorize the continued use of an existing motocross facility. And... Yes.
Did anybody feed the gerbil from the cage? Are we on a budget cut for those guys, too? Do we need to take a little recess?
Maybe if I try left-handed.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, and those that are listening at home, we're having a little technical difficulty, so let's take a five to 10 minute break.
Two thumbs a. Okay. All systems go.
Okay, everybody?
We got time.
There we go. Switching to missiles. As we were last talking, Mr. Brawlsky was about to give us a report. Jay, please.
Thank you Chair Westner. Since nobody heard our opening remarks, I'll just repeat that real quick. The request before you this morning is for a modified conditional use permit to authorize the continued use of an existing motocross facility. The motocross facility is located just outside of Piru. The facility is located adjacent to Highway 126 and Center Street. The facility includes an adult track, a peewee track, a caretaker dwelling unit, an informal parking area, and will have a limit of no more than 300 people on site. In order to permit the facility, two items are required. One, a modified CUP, and two, a non-coastal zoning ordinance text amendment. The text amendment is required because the facility is currently not allowed due to its location within the Piru-Filmore Green Belt and within a high fire hazard area. The proposed text amendment would allow the facility at its current location as the current CUP predates the Green Belt and a previous Board of Supervisors pre-screening of the proposed text amendment. The facility is located on a 40-acre lot, and both tracks are easily accessible from the parking area. The facility is partially screened from Highway 126. The parking area provides space for customers to set up their motorcycles. The facility has a caretaker dwelling unit for the one full-time employee. The parking area contains bleachers for viewing the racing activities. The adult track is the larger track and is used by older riders. The peewee track is the smaller track and is used by younger and smaller riders. In 1996, the Planning Commission approved CUP 4911 for the facility. A text amendment was also required at the time because the motocross use was not allowed within the open space zone. In 2000, the facility became non-conforming due to the Green Belt and high fire hazard area. In 2002, the CUP was renewed for another 10 years. In 2012, the current application was submitted for the continued use of the facility. At that time, the facility was not allowed in its current location. Just last year, in 2014, the Board of Supervisors approved a pre-screening of the proposed Staff has reviewed the project for environmental impacts. A mitigated negative declaration was adopted in 2002 for the continued operation of the facility. The proposed continuation of use will not result in any physical changes. Thus, staff has not identified any new significant impacts and has prepared an addendum to the In order to grant a modified CUP, your commission must make certain findings pursuant to the non-coastal zoning ordinance. Staff has determined that the project meets those findings, and that discussion is in the staff report. Notice of this public hearing was mailed to surrounding property owners, and a legal ad was printed in the newspaper. I'd like to mention there were three additional items just submitted to you. One of them is a memo, another is a comment letter, and the third item is a bunch of support letters that was just submitted this morning. Based on the previous discussion, staff recommends that your commission take the actions detailed in the staff report and approve the modified CUP, and recommend that the Board of Supervisors amend the non-coastal zoning ordinance. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. The applicant is also in attendance this morning and can also answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff at this point?
I have one question, Jay. I have one question, Jay. I noticed in going through the documents that the issue of public safety and the impact and their input into this process, just refer to the documents, whatever was provided in 1996, as I understood it, essentially because the project is no more intense or larger than it was before. If anything, it's less activity or lower number of days from originally proposed. And so they haven't had any direct input into this process other than what I've read here. Is that correct?
Commissioner Rodriguez, yes. The project will be subject to a condition of approval to require a public safety plan, which will be reviewed by the Sheriff's Office as well as the Fire Department and Planning.
Okay. So there is no existing public safety plan? Since this is a renewal, in essence, is there not a public safety plan currently on record and available to Planning to review?
The Sheriff's Department has reviewed the original project, and they're requesting an updated safety plan.
So all that will occur prior to...
That's right. Prior to use inauguration.
I'm sorry?
Prior to use inauguration.
Is the facility currently in use?
Yes, the facility is currently operating out there while the permit is in process.
Is it operating with or without a valid safety plan? I realize we're talking about expired CUP.
Right. According to the Sheriff's Department, the safety plan is adequate. That was, again, that was originally reviewed a while ago.
The safety plan that was approved under the original CUP?
Yes, that's correct.
And it's subject to review and updating?
Yes.
Before this current CUP formally goes into effect?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff at this time? Thank you, Jay. At this point in time, I'll ask for disclosures. Commissioner Kim?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Adukas?
I have no disclosures.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
No disclosures.
The only disclosure Chair has is I, at least once a week, drive to 126 to Valencia. So I've been driving past the facility a number of years, but I've never stopped and inspected it. All right. With that, then we'll go... Oh, let me remind everybody, I don't know if we're going to be here that long, but just if you're parked in parking lot G over here, it's a three-hour time limit. We normally take a break between 10:00 and 10:30. I'll try to remember to remind you if you're parked over to go move the vehicle. Otherwise, they do ticket here, don't they? Yeah, okay. All right. To explain to everybody what will happen, we will open a public hearing, and we have the applicant talk first if they want to. At that point in time, all those who are in favor that are present can speak, then all those who oppose will speak. Applicant gets the final rebuttal, and then we will hear closing comments from staff, and then we will close the public hearing and take our deliberations at that point in time, which can include approval, approval with changes on the recommendations, or denial. All right, with that, I have Kevin Keel. Is that how you pronounce it?
Yes.
And I assume you're speaking from the applicant since it's your name on the application. If you please come forward. State your name and address, Kevin.
Kevin Keel. 4375 Center Street, Piru, California.
Thank you.
Commission, Commissioners, thank you. My name is Kevin Keel, owner-operator of the Piru Motocross Park located in the community of Piru at 4375 Center Street. I want to thank you for your consideration for this renewal at this time. We have been a part of the community for almost 20 years, 19 to be exact. The park provides a safe and controlled environment for motorcycle enthusiasts to enjoy their hobby or pursue a career in the sport. There are two tracks, one for the kids, and it's beginner's kids' track, and then there is a track for more advanced riders. We are open Wednesday from 9:00 to 6:00, Saturday and Sunday from 9:00 to 2:00. The track is designed and maintained with the safety and enjoyment of the riders in mind while following the guidelines of the CUP. There are five to six employees on staff during the hours of operation, which are all first aid trained, with the manager having EMT certification. There is an emergency plan in place in the event that it is needed. The track is hand-watered by staff while the parking lot is watered when needed to control dust. This serves as two purposes there at the property. It creates... It keeps the dust down, and it creates optimal riding conditions for the motorcycles, the bikes on the track. For erosion control, we have a series of catch basins located around the track and at the base of the parking lot. We never disturb the natural vegetation on the hillsides to help support that. Since the track has been located in the same location for 19 years, it has, in a way, become one with the land as far as the erosion and the catch basins and how everything settles there. The track is a member of the Heritage Valley Tourism Bureau and participates with the promotion of tourism within our Heritage Valley there, the corridor. Motorcycle enthusiasts travel from not only inside Ventura County but surrounding counties and even states to enjoy the facility. This helps promote the local economy, and we also like to note that all of our employees live inside Ventura County. I am also a member of the Piru CERT team, and we have designated that location and track as an emergency go-to in the community there for high ground in case of an earthquake or the dam breaking. And we also have a lot of water on the facility there to be able to keep that and support in case of an emergency. The business has been a part of the community for almost 20 years, and we'd love to continue that relationship with the county. And it's a family-operated business that we promote family recreation there, and, you know, I'd just like to ask you guys for the approval of the CUP. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Any questions of Kevin at this? Commissioner Adukas?
Were you able to see a letter that was provided to us from a neighboring ranch?
Comullos? Yes.
And what do you say to their concerns that you're... that there's runoff that impacts their ranch?
Yeah. First of all, it's news to me. And as far as the drain that they're discussing, that they're speculating it's going to fill, you know, we've gone and followed what was recommended by the county with the regulations, and I don't see an issue on our side. The fence line's intact, our hay bales are intact. We haven't had any problems. So I did review that, and...
Have you talked directly to them to see what it is that they're complaining about, or...
No, this was just brought to my attention. I guess the letter was yesterday, so...
Okay. So moving forward?
I have no problem.
Moving forward, do you think that you might contact them directly and say, "What are you talking about?"
Yes, yes. Yeah, of course, because it's our neighbor. You know, we want to find out exactly if there is a little bit of sediment, and it's better to just be proactive about it and figure out before the drain, you know, there was concern that there would be a drain filling up. I'd like to solve that problem before the drain does fill up. So yeah, I'm going to reach out to them for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, Kevin? Commissioner Rodriguez?
Kevin, what's the safety record out there?
As far as how many incidents per year, or...
How many incident per year and the range of incidents, the type of incidents you have out there?
The most common's, you know, probably just, you know, broken bones, couple concussions. Our incidence's very, very low.
What does that mean?
Maybe a...
A hundred?
Oh, not even, maybe...
Ten. Give me...
Less than 10 of you.
I mean, statistically, how many do you think you have on the average per year?
I'd say 10 or less.
Okay. And have all those been handled by staff, or have fire or EMTs responded?
Most of it's handled by staff, and then there has been... Our staff is EMT certified, so most of it gets handled there, and they generally can go to the hospital on their own. We do have called the Fire Department out. If there's even a concern that we have someone out there that is... it could be life-threatening or that type of event, we do call the Ventura County Fire Department. They're right there in town, and a good group of guys, we know them well through the CERT team, so we kind of work together there.
And the paper in front of us says you or your family took over operation of the facility in '08, 2008? Is that correct?
2008, yes.
Okay. Have there been any deaths on the property as a result of an accident?
Yes.
When did that occur?
June 2000, it's two years ago, June 2012.
What were the circumstances?
It was just, he was... Actually, it was not a... And there was no involvement with another rider. He was riding down a straightaway, and it was... He... The bike just flipped up on him as he was slowing down for a turn, and because of his injuries, he didn't pass away there. The family had made a decision based on some head injury and spinal cord injury.
Okay, but it was a result of the activities on premises?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's one from, you know, 20 years of riding there, so...
Yeah. You understand that you're required to provide insurance and indemnification to the county as well as yourself, obviously, as part of your operation?
Yes.
I'm assuming that exists?
Yes.
Do you have any reporting to the county on that process?
I...
How often do you make notice to the county of your valid insurance?
It's never been requested, but we do have it in place.
Okay. My concern, the reason my question is obviously, there's liability there, and you've had one death there, and I don't know... I don't intend to explore what's happened since then, but there's liability there, and so the county, by extension, potentially, would have liability since we're issuing the CUP. Would you have any problem with providing proof of insurance to county planning on an annual basis?
No problem.
Since I assume you maintain it, is there any problem with that?
No problem at all.
Certainly, I think I feel a little bit better knowing that, you know, it's a continuous thing and hasn't lapsed or hasn't been discontinued for whatever reason, and the county not finding out about it until after some incident might occur. Do you understand where I'm coming from?
Oh, absolutely. Very fair.
Okay. Tell me about food services.
About what?
Food services on your... On-site.
Food services? We don't do food services.
The report references vending machines.
Oh, vending machines, yeah. I thought you talked about, like, hot food or warm food. We have two vending machines. One has water and soda, and one has snacks like protein bars.
Okay.
Protein bars, and that's it.
So you don't intend to provide any sort of commercial food services, either directly or through a third party on premises?
No.
And I'm specifically talking about something like having a food truck come in and set up shop in your parking lot?
No.
Okay.
We don't have any plans for that.
That's all the questions I have. The only one I have, if nobody else... And again, probably not ask you, but just since you work well with the Fire Department, it appears. Is there a facility or a space available for a helicopter to come in and out?
Yes.
Okay. Have you discussed that or worked out with the Fire Department regarding it? Because again, what I just heard about the death.
Yes. You have a procedure for when a helicopter comes.
Okay. Good. Great. All right. Any other questions? By then, my last question is, do you have any problems with any of the conditions that staff has requested to be placed on this permit?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, Kevin, you do get the last comment, so once Mike Smith's done, you can come back up.
Okay.
Speaking of which, Mike, you're next, and he'll be followed by Paul Wolf. Name and address, Mike.
Good morning. Mike Smith. I'm 4626 Bell Vista Drive, Moore Park, California.
Thank you.
I'm a 50-year Ventura County resident, avid motorcycle enthusiast. I'd just like to be here today to support this facility. This is... For motorcycle people like us, this is our little league field. This, you know, fortunately, this facility, it opened up when my son was five years old, and he's been... That's been a family recreational spot for us for the 19 years that it's been open. So, you know, we're out there after work with our kids when they're little and they grow up and they're still in motorsports, and it's just worked out really well for our families and all of us to have this in our county. When we were kids, lots of years ago now, there was quite a few of these facilities in and around Ventura County, kept us off the streets. All of our friends are either in the business of this or whatever, and just spent around a really good group of people for a lot of years. So we're proud to have this as part of our county's infrastructure here, and we look forward to many years to come for future generations. But again, if you're a motorsports person, this is our soccer field, or our little league field, and we're very grateful to have it. Thank you very much.
Any questions, Mike? Commissioner Adukas?
What other facilities currently are there in Ventura County that provide the same type of service?
There is no other ones that are a legal facility, and this one is a legal facility, and we're proud to have it, but it is the only one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Paul Wolf, followed by Rick Neal.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Name is Paul Wolf, W-O-L-F-F, and address is 2360 Eastman Avenue, Unit 112, Oxnard, California, 93030. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak here today. I just want to tell you a little bit about my experience with Piru Motocross Park because it's been a fantastic experience for me and my family. I have four boys, and they range in age from 23 years old down to six years old currently, and don't ask me why, it's... And we've been going to Piru Motocross Park literally for 18 years. It's a family tradition for us. It's an incredible bonding experience, not only for myself and my kids, but we have made lifelong friends up there. Living in Oxnard, traveling out to Piru, we have our traditions. We always eat in the Filmore area. We like to go to the motocross park, ride our dirt bikes, and then we go eat at the same place every single time. We buy fuel up there. You know, we really do help support the surrounding community, and the track has been nothing but a positive experience and a very bonding experience for my family and myself and all the other families that we associate with that like to ride dirt bikes. And so I 100% support the track, and if something happened and that track went away, it would be a real blow to our family and hundreds of families that count on that facility to be open and provide us a place to ride our dirt bikes.
Any questions, Paul? I have one. Since you have four boys, the safety measures that are in place, do you feel that your children are safe with that?
I do. I feel like the brunt of the responsibility for safety relies on the riders, wearing a helmet, an approved helmet, wearing the gloves, wearing all the safety gear, which is your knee pads and all the things that all motocross riders wear. The track itself is a very, very safe track. Now, there are tracks around California that I feel are not safe tracks, that we don't frequent. I don't make my living racing dirt bikes, and I never will, and so I do it because it's fun. I get a workout, and I have this experience with my kids. So I feel like Piru Motocross Park is probably the safest facility that I've ever been to. And so they do a great job on maintaining the track. And by the way, I have no interest in the track. I'm not an owner in the track. I'm not an investor in the track, but I'm a big supporter of the track, and they do a phenomenal job on safety up there. And they do a phenomenal job on, on safety up there.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Paul? Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
Rick Neal is the last card I have.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Rick Neal. I live at 424 Saratoga Street in Fillmore.
Thank you.
I'm a council member for the City of Fillmore currently. And I also am chairing the, or president of the Heritage Valley Tourism Bureau this year. So, I'm here to speak on support of the renewal of the permit. You know, there's a lot of benefits that the motocross track brings to the community. The tourism is one of them. We get people from all over, you know, the southern part of the state coming to our area. And when they come, they also notice everything else that's around and, you know, come back for train visits and visit the beach and fun stuff like that. So, we see definite benefits there. We consider it to be safe for what it is, you know? I mean, people choose to participate in this type of activity. I think they, they recognize there are dangers in it. But if you compare the motocross park to maybe even Lake Piru, the injuries and deaths are, you know, really, from that perspective, I think they're, they're very reasonable. Motocross can be a dangerous, dangerous sport. I think it's well confined. You don't have a lot of the drinking and riding that you see in a lot of other places, you know? They can really keep an eye on, on how people are riding, what their, what their abilities are and have a chance to talk to them at each, you know, at each break or, you know, appropriate time. As a council member, one of my concerns is the illegal riding that I think will happen without a park or a place for people to, to be able to ride. You know, we had a lot of riding in riverbeds before and when I was a kid, that's, that's where I rode a little bit. It wasn't a big deal then. It is a big deal now. And I just see it, that it's important to provide someplace for people to go to have this type of recreation. And it's a, it's a good spot for it. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any questions? I have a couple. First of all, I believe the statute of limitations has run on the illegal riding that you did.
Okay, thank you.
So, you're good to go. But it is on the record now. Okay. Second is, one of the issues here today is making an exception for this in the fire hazard and the green belt, which is the city council, is probably a concern of yours. There's a fear, well, usually there's a concern, when we carve out an exception, that sets a precedent for somebody else, particularly as a councilman, as far as this green belt. Do you have any concerns or has anybody expressed that to you?
Nobody's expressed that to me and personally, I do not.
Okay. So, you feel if we recommend to the board supervisors to allow this exception, that the City of Fillmore is comfortable with that?
Yeah. I, I know one out of five definitely is and I haven't heard anything from any others.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that wants to speak in favor other than the applicant? Is there anybody who would like to speak in opposition? Let the record reflect, nobody stepped forward. Kevin, you get the last word if you want to use it. You don't have to.
Come on up, Kevin. I'll ask you something.
Uh-oh, here we go. Place your hands on the fender.
Thanks for your time. You know, I appreciate it. We've been here for a long time and, and we'd like to stay for much more time. It's important to, a lot of families to provide that recreation and, and that structure out there, so.
You had a question?
How do you, the documentation talks about a maximum of 300 people. For clarity, are we talking 300 visitors onsite? Are we talking 300 riders? What are we talking about? And how do you control that?
300 visitors, I believe, is what is recommended on this.
Correct.
And-
How would you control that?
Well, there's, first of all, there's not enough space. I mean, it would be very obvious vehicle-wise. Second, everyone has to sign a waiver that comes on that property. We monitor each and every individual that comes on there. So, it's very easy to count how many heads are there. Each waiver is designated for each day of use. So, you know, it's very, very easy to, to check how many people are in that door.
So, it's a check-in process that occurs on a daily basis?
Absolutely. Every individual person that comes in there, whether they're a spectator or a rider, has to check in, has to sign in. So, the answer would be yes, there's a very accurate way to keep track of how many people.
What do you do about alcohol consumption on the property?
It's not allowed. And to be honest with you-
Are you telling me it's never occurred?
As far as I know, it's never occurred. If people are keeping it very, very under the radar, it, this, this group of people aren't like that.
Right.
Our customers aren't-
Yeah.
It's, it's just not the environment.
Sure. Okay.
So, it's never been an issue.
Okay. I've got another question. It says staff.
Okay. Before I go to that-
Thank you, Kevin.
No. I, I want to go to noise and that's, I'll follow up with staff on this. Since this is a quiet activity, motocross is very quiet, right? Very stealth, nobody knows. Have you received any complaints from anybody in the local area about the noise?
No.
Okay. All right. All right. That's all I have. There's nothing else. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
We'll, we'll hear, any additional comments from staff?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the, the facility is not changing from what it is existing. There is one change, though, that's been imposed in this, in this current round. That is the limit on the number of people who can arrive at the site. Prior, the prior permit had no limit. And, and we're loath to have something that's unlimited. And, and so, the, the number was, was not completely picked out of the air. That's pretty much the capacity of the site, given the number and availability of parking spaces for people to arrive there. So, you know, Mr. Keel really can't have more than 300 people there because it'd be very difficult, you have to bus them in. So, it wouldn't be the kind of thing he could do. So, but we, we wanted that for clarity so that, you know, any potential changes in the future, we have a baseline from which to evaluate. So, that really is the, the major change in the facility. On the sedimentation issue, we have discussed this more than once with the Watershed Protection District. And they have imposed a condition of approval that requires some plans and review by them. They don't believe there's a serious problem there in terms of sedimentation on the site. And, and their engineer has been out there. And there's already catch basins, as the applicant said, that at various points in the site are, are particularly for sediment control. And we, we don't have anything to say about the public safety aspect of it. I guess if you're riding a dirt bike around in a circle and you go enough times around, eventually accidents will happen. And that's just the nature of the facility. As best we can tell, this facility is no more dangerous than any other similar facility. Now, there was a question about liability insurance and, and staff will take a good idea even when it comes from the planning commission. And, and so, what we're going to do in response to Commissioner Rodriguez's questions is we're going to modify Condition 58, that's the public safety plan condition, to make sure or require that, that the, the plan include the maintenance of liability insurance on the site and annual submittal of insurance documentation to the planning division. In addition, the documentation must specifically name the County of Ventura as an additional insurant. And so, we'll incorporate that into Condition 58 should your commission decide that's appropriate. With that, we await any other questions.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah. On the, the board letter, April 15th, page 6 of 7, we talked about the impact it has in the green belt area. And we talked about the high hazard area. And that the proposed text amendments to allow this, in essence, are going to, to create a situation where we have two tentatively identified sites, the applicant's plus some other unknown site, up to as many as potentially 257 other sites that in theory could also fall under this text amendment. Would you explain that, please?
Chairman Westner, Commissioner Rodriguez, that was April 15th and that was when the Board of Supervisors told the planning division staff to go back and give it additional thought. And, and when we came back and revised the proposal, it limits this allowance to the single site that's before you today. That was an initial screening of the initial idea.
Okay.
That's no longer on the table.
Okay.
The, the only site that would be eligible for the proposed text amendment is the one before you today.
I have one other, well, a couple of questions. One has to do with the proposed planning commission resolution. At the bottom, requesting that the commission adopt the resolution and parentheses, Exhibit 9 of the April 2, 2015 Planning Commission Hearing Staff Report. Excuse me, Exhibit 9. Exhibit 9 is three letters of recommendation. Is that supposed to be Exhibit 8?
Commissioner Rodriguez, you are correct. But I would, I would point out that it's only one digit off.
It's kind of like horseshoes and hand grenades, isn't it?
Thank you very much. We'll correct that.
You're two for two now.
I am? Should I quit?
It's your call. Spin the wheel, you may anti-bankrupt.
I have one more.
Okay.
On the, the letter, on the Planning Commission Staff Report, the letter dated April 2nd today, page 7 on adopted, on the recommendations under adoption. A, to certify that the, that your board has reviewed and considered the board letter. Should that rather read that your commission has reviewed and considered the board letter?
Commissioner Rodriguez, which, this is on page 22 of today's staff-
I know. Well, I'm looking at, it says Planning Commission Staff Report for PL 15-dash-whatever. Planning Commission hearing on April 2nd, 2015, page 7 of 8. It's, the page is headed Recommended Actions for the Commission.
Item 2A and the recommended actions.
I'm afraid my copy, I only see commission. Item 7, it says adopt the resolution to recommend that the Board of Supervisors make the required
Can I pass, can I pass you a copy of this?
Yes, please.
For those who are listening on the audio, staff is reviewing what Commissioner Rodriguez has provided.
Page 7 of 8, that's something else. That's the, trying to figure out what that is.
Yeah, that's not the same as what we have on the packet. That's not even ours.
Yeah. Let's see. That's different. Yeah. I don't know why the date, the date must have been on automatic date field or something. But I don't understand that.
Yeah, that's different than what you have.
Yeah.
All right. Well, obviously, there's a discrepancy on what the page is.
You know, there's, it, obviously, the, the action being taken today is by the planning commission. That resolution you're showing me is obviously part of a previous letter that went to the board. What we're confused about is the header on there, which refers to the planning commission.
Right.
So, there, there is an error there. Commissioner Rodriguez is three for three.
You, you don't have to stay after 10:00 today.
I can leave early.
You can leave early. Okay. All right. Anything else, Rick?
No.
Okay. All right. I got, I got a softball for staff then. I already talked about the, the noise issue. Condition 22, nuisance noise. It states in the requirement, "When the peremptee has been notified by the planning division that the peremptee is operating in violation of the applicable noise standard, the peremptee shall correct the problem as soon as possible in coordination with the planning division." The next paragraph states, "If the noise problem has not been corrected by 7:00 PM of the following day, all project-related operations shall be suspended until the problem's corrected." Given the nature of measuring sound, giving, determining the violation, giving the ability to get an expert out to take measurements and say that the problem's been fixed, I'm a little confused how the peremptee can respond within 24 hours. I know what the intent of staff is to do is to keep it quiet.
Mr. Chair, I think we could just do without that sentence because obviously, when we receive a noise complaint, we're going to be requiring them to do a study and, and, and get the noise back within standards, should that occur. But yeah, that's not necessary. We couldn't respond in 24 hours in any event.
Right. Yeah. Okay. All right. So, I guess what I'd like is some applicable language that would accommodate a timely resolution.
Yes.
Okay. Because again, I don't think the peremptee, they don't have somebody on staff going to measure all the sound every day kind of thing. So, trying to coordinate that. All right. Anything other questions to staff? Commissioner Cam?
I have a question. Does the, is there something about a railroad crossing on the property? Or does a railroad go near, do they have to cross the railroad tracks to get to the parking? Okay. No? Sorry.
Perhaps Mr. Keel, since he's there every day, can tell me how close the railroad tracks are.
There's no railroad tracks.
Okay. I must have misread that.
They were abandoned in the 50s or whatever.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, 1850s when I first started up here. Commissioner Rodriguez, I'm sorry, Commissioner, are you done? Yeah. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Staff, I have one more question. Given, given everything that's going on out there in the Piru area, the updates, the housing issues, we have multiple housing units that have cleared the commission and are just waiting for economics to change, to start some dwelling units out there, multiple thousands, as I recall. I, I'm wondering why we, we maybe shouldn't consider 10-year CUP with, with the planning director able to extend it for another 10 years for a total of 20, to allow for conditions that might change, that might require us to modify something. Can somebody speak to that?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Rodriguez. I would say that the, when we updated the Piru area plan and allowed those future subdivisions to go in, that, that whole of that action already took into account the fact that there was this motocross facility there because it was the existing setting at the time. So, I believe that we've already covered that issues and felt comfortable issuing a 20-year permit and we thought we would, you know, we were clearly able to make the findings that, that this was consistent with the community and we were able to make the findings in the EIR that the development was consistent with this motocross operation that was already in effect.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions to staff? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. This is when the commissioners deliberate. Comments?
I would like to move the recommended actions in the staff report.
Okay. Would that include the changes to item 22 and-
Modify Condition 58 to include the proof of the maintenance of the liability insurance and-
Additional language in 22.
And the, yes.
Okay. I'll second.
And I guess we have to include the-
The new exhibits.
Exhibits that, that we received?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just for clarity, on the changes to Condition 58 involves the maintenance of liability insurance has to be included, annual submittal of the insurance documentation to the planning division, and that the documentation must name the County of Ventura- to the Planning Division, and that the documentation must name the county of Ventura as an additional insured.
Correct.
That would be Condition 58. On Condition 22, we're going to add some language about timely resolution of complaints, you know, as determined by the Planning Director.
Correct.
I would second that.
All right, we have a motion and section. Any deliberation on the motion, Commissioner?
I would just, I would just like to add that I think it's important that the county maintain the legal area where there is some control and some oversight because you close it down, it's not going to stop the sport and it'll be more dangerous and more noxious. And so I think that this is an appropriate, appropriately placed venue and that we have direction from the Board of Supervisors that, that it merits the exception to the green belt and so on and so forth. And I've been to Grover Beach with, with my kids and it's, there's, there's risk. And, but there's also a thrill. So I'm in support of the plan.
Just so you know, I'm in support of it because I have two clients that have large pieces of property in Ventura County and there's a constant problem with the fences being cut and people dirt biking. And when you have several head of cattle that you're paying a lot of money to care for, it causes all kinds of problems. So again, if we have a legal place for them to operate, doesn't mean, the illegal's not going to occur, but if definitely we shut everything down, we're going to, we're going to get former city councilmen writing in the riverbed. Don't want that happening. Again, right. Okay. All right, any further comments? Not hearing any? Place your votes. Motion passes. Four zip. Congratulations, gentlemen. Best of luck to you. Minute for the room to clear. I'm not sure that's his error, so. All right, moving on to item number eight, the exciting one today.
Good morning, Chair Westner and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Jennifer Butler and I am a planner in the RMA Planning Division. Today, I will be presenting to you on a board-initiated action item regarding an amendment to the public hearing process in our non-coastal zoning ordinance. So I'm going to start off by giving you guys a background on our current county regulations and how the issue of notification was brought up and a background of the Board of Supervisors' request. Then I will give you our proposed amendments and how they will look once implemented and then move on to our recommended actions. So currently, our county requirements are meet state law and what state law states is that you need to give public hearing notification to all discretionary permits, which require public hearing. Properties within 300 feet of the subject parcel must be notified and they must be notified 10 days prior to the hearing. If for any reason more than 1,000 property owners need to be notified, they can opt to not send a postcard, but place a one-eighth-page advertisement in a newspaper. And that is the requirements from the state. However, the Planning Division internally, we go above and beyond this requirement. We actually do the mail-out and we also place a legal ad in the newspaper as well. So despite the fact that we actually go above and beyond, several property owners felt that they weren't being notified of the, of public hearings that were coming up. And most of these property owners, they live in rural communities with, characterized by a large loss. And so the Board of Supervisors requested staff to evaluate the issue and provide alternate solutions, which were presented in your staff report. And they, and staff responded with several alternate solutions and the board reviewed this and considered this in analysis and gave us direct directions on how to proceed with the amendment. The, the direction was to, in addition to the 300-foot radius notification, place 15 parcel notification minimum. And this amendment needed to be done not only for the NCZO, but for the subdivision ordinance and the coastal zoning ordinance as well. But today, I'm only going to be presenting on the amendments to the non-coastal zoning ordinance and the amendments to the other two ordinances will be presented to you when we do our general overhaul updates to those amendments, to those ordinances. Here is the actual proposed amendment. We're going to maintain the 300-foot notification radius, but in the instance that within the 300-foot notification radius, you're notifying under 15 parcels, that radius will be expanded until at least 15 parcels are notified. Another minor amendment we're proposing is to put in the language to notify the public 10 days prior to the hearing and remove the government code section, which it references because it's equivalent and it would be redundant. So to give you an example of how this will look when we...
I'm sorry, we have a question by Commissioner Dukas.
I'm sorry, I want to make sure that I'm following. Could you go back, I guess, two slides to the, yeah, 15 or more parcels? Is that, does that mean parcels owned by 15 different people?
Oh, no, it'll be 15 individual parcels needed to, well, so yes, it'll be 15 individual people, various owners.
Is that, is that necessarily true that these parcels would be owned by different people? Is it possible that there are areas where there are multiple parcels owned by one person?
Yeah, I mean, that could be a possibility that they would be owned. I think that would be rare.
I think, I think that the intention, I'm just wondering how 15 got there. Could you explain how the number 15 got there then?
We gave the board several methodology options and their direction was to give us to use the number 15. When we did our analysis.
With the, is it my understanding, was my understanding that the, that the reason why was to have more people notified?
Yes.
Okay. And maybe I'll follow up with counsel later on, on what constitutes significance when it's a group of people. In some, in some instances, you know, that one person might have a significant impact from, from a proposed development and, you know, it's just one person. But then in order for it to be considered a community, I think we heard before that it was perhaps eight people that are impacted for it to rise to a certain level of significance? Are you speaking about a public nuisance? Mm-hmm. Oh, okay. Or, or other? When it comes to whether or not it's just a single person and an inconvenience for that one person or whether it becomes, it rises to a higher level?
I think I understand what you're getting at, Commissioner. There's no hard and fast limit under state law when you're talking about the difference between a public and, and private, public and private nuisance. And so I'm not sure if we could really get to that through this amendment. But, I mean, I guess the, I think you raise a good question and it's something we should discuss, the way the language is currently worded. My interpretation is, planning is going to notify, basically the notification is pegged to parcels as opposed to owners. And so if, if there's not enough notification with the, with the 300-foot radius, then planning keeps going until 15 parcels are included within the radius. And so even if, if all 15 parcels are owned by the same owner, that wouldn't result in more owners receiving notice. And I don't know how often that would happen, but it would get more complicated, in my opinion, if planning had to research the ownership of each parcel until they got to 15 owners. And so that's, I was part of that discussion with, with planning and so my recommendation is you just go by parcel as opposed to putting the onus on planning to research ownership and getting at it from that way. So I hope that clarifies it.
Okay, yeah, I just, I guess, am seeking perfection. But, but I understand now. Thank you.
So to give you some examples on how this amendment will be implemented, we analyzed 10 parcels in two communities, the East Ojai Valley and Santa Rosa Valley, which both communities are characterized by rural development. Five parcels over here in East Ojai Valley, as you can see, the blue represents the 300-foot radius and the red represents the expanded radius with the 15 parcel notification, notification minimum. Parcels three and four had to expand their boundaries. This chart provides characteristics of the five parcels that we just analyzed in the map. As you can see, there's zoning and the number of properties notified at 300-foot threshold and the properties notified with the 15 parcel minimum threshold. Parcel three and four both had to identify six additional parcels with the 15 parcel minimum, minimum notification threshold. In the Santa Rosa Valley example, four of the five parcels had to expand their radius. As you can see, parcel 10 had the greatest, greatest expansion, up to 3,000 feet needed to be expanded to notify 15 parcels, at least 15 parcels, but it actually notified 22 parcels. That's because probably the zoning was open space with 120-acre minimum and the surrounding parcels were large as well. And when we expand the radius, the radius is expanded equidistant and it depends on the surrounding parcels and their various sizes when you reach the 15 parcel minimum. So you don't always get a 15 parcel minimum notification, that number can vary depending on the surrounding parcels. So that is what the amendment will look like when implemented and this amendment, we're not foreseeing any environmental impacts. And we recommend that your commission adopt the proposal and a resolution to the Board of Supervisors to approve this amendment as well. And that concludes my presentation. If there are any additional questions?
Okay, any additional questions to staff at this time? Hearing none, thank you very much. Since this is an update, we don't have to make disclosures. So anybody want to speak in favor of this? Seeing none and hearing none? Anybody would like to speak opposing? Seeing and hearing none? We'll have final comments from the applicant slash staff.
I don't have any further comments to add.
Okay. I'll open the, let me officially open the public hearing. Is there any comments from commissioners? Anybody with a TV?
Well, coming, coming from working in the Ojai Valley MAC, this is a very pragmatic solution to an issue that's come up a number of times. I'm, I'm very much pleased to see such an efficient solution.
Rick? Just a comment. I'm glad to see the county moving forward in this direction, you know, in the limited time I've been here. And we have heard from, from people that, that apparently were, were not notified for some reason and yet they were in relatively close proximity. I think something like this might, might include those people in notifications if something else happened in their particular area. I think planning's gone an awful long way and beyond the minimum requirements to notify people. We've done, you know, we, we're on the internet now. We've done public notices on upcoming issues to make as many people aware of what's occurring in a particular area or parcel or what's coming up. So I think this is, this is a real good move to continue that process and be more inclusive with the information for the people that might be impacted by it. Thanks for the work.
Jeff, the only question I have, my assumption, and it happens when you assume, is can a council look as far as doing more, we're not in any conflict with the state code, is that correct?
Correct, that's a good question. We couldn't do, we couldn't do less in terms of notice under state law, but we certainly can do more.
Okay. I'll have to echo what Rick just said. We always hear, "Nobody told me." And, you know, we mail the postcards to the legal address and on and on and on and on. But there is logic and common sense that, yeah, because if there's 120-acre parcels, 300 feet, you're done with one parcel. And like the Ojai or Santa Rosa Valley or even Lockwood Valley, you know, you can live five miles away, but putting 100 wolves in your backyard, you'd like to know about things like that. So I've tended to agree with a lot of people, there was no way for us to find out. Now, and I do want to compliment staff, the fact that they constantly see this need to reach out so people do have the opportunity to comment and come before us so they understand what's going on. So I think this is a tremendous step in that direction. Last century, when we just simply would put a wooden sign with three-inch letters and that was sufficient notice for people driving by at 60 miles an hour, I always felt was a little, but it was legal and that's what. Now, I did notice that you carved a little exception out up there that if the number of parcels exceeded 1,000, you only had to take out a one-eighth inch add. And I assume that's for cost effective reasons?
That's correct and that's the way that it exists now.
Yeah.
So, that we've, we've always done it that way. And I also wanted to just be really careful here to give credit where credit is due. So this is to the Supervisor Parks has wanted to do this for, for quite a while and she got the board to agree to do it and fund it and fund the staff. And then our, our staff here, Rosemary and Jennifer, have just done a really great job in bringing this forward. But, but I would like to recognize Supervisor Parks for, for allowing the board to put this on our workload. It was a happy work product to do because it was something that we also felt was really necessary.
Okay. All right. Any further comments? With that, what is the commission's pleasure?
I'd like to move the recommended actions.
I have a recommended, anybody select a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion on the motion? If not? Please vote. All right, anybody who objects to the Planning Commission's recommendations, the Board of Supervisors has 10 working calendar days, do file an appeal. I just want to say that because there's nobody here. No, I don't mean nobody. You never know who's going to show up and do this kind of thing. All right, with that, then we will move on to the important part, direction from the director.
So thank you, Chair Westner. One thing I don't want to put Susan on the spot, but our audience member this morning is our new planner. She started here on Monday. Her name's Susan Curtis. She comes to us from a wealth of experience and she is at the senior planner level. She, she already received a caseload of really challenging products. She'll be back here before you shortly, but she's been with the county of Santa Barbara most recently for a number of years. So you will be seeing her often in front of you in the months to come. Also, I wanted to update you a little bit on where we were with our general plan update. So I've talked to you a little bit about that before, where we had gone to the board and the board had provided funding to really do just a scoping of the general plan, what it may look like. And so we have hired a consulting firm out of Sacramento. I think I told you that, their name's Mentor Harnish. They have a wealth of experience in doing general plan updates. They're very different than a lot of other consulting firms that do, you know, a lot of, of process issue. The general plan is, is a much different animal and they have a lot of experience in that and I'm very grateful for that. So what we're going to do, we have a very compressed timeline, timeline to get back to the board to ask them what it is that they would like us to do over the next several years to get our general plan updated. And so we're going to start out with these visioning processes at the public level. So we are going out, we have meetings scheduled and we're going to be putting these up on our, our internet and the county has...
our, our internet and the county has a Facebook page. I'm meeting with the public information officer later today to, to really get the word out. But it's going to be on Wednesday and Thursday, April 22nd and 23rd. There's going to be daytime meetings here at the county on the 23rd from 1:30 to 3:30 in the Pacific Conference Room. And then we're going to have an East County meeting in the Thousand Oaks Sheriff's Substation on the 22nd from 6 to 8. And then we're going to have a meeting in the Casita Springs Community Center on Thursday, April 23rd from 6 to 8 as well. So we're just getting our flyers out for that and we'll be making a big push to see if we can get people to come out for this visioning process to, to have the public tell us what they would like to see for the next 20-plus years. And then what is going to, so of course we will, we'll send this out to you and we welcome you at any of these meetings. But what we were also going to do is on Tuesday through Friday, April 14th through the 17th, our consultants are going to be facilitating a series of one-hour interviews with key stakeholders, including representatives from throughout Ventura County to discuss the current general plan results of our current policies that we have and then begin crafting this future policy. So we will be contacting you, seeing what's a good time, if you're interested, for you to come in and sit down. So if you haven't perused the general plan lately or if you have a policy, a general plan policy in your area that, that's troublesome, you know, that would be the time to raise it at these, at either of these meetings, you know, at the public meetings or in these key stakeholder meetings that we'll be setting up. So I just wanted to give you a timeframe because it's fast approaching. And then we're going to take all of this information, or our consultants will, they'll take all of this information together and, and put together a comprehensive report. And then there'll be a joint Planning Commission, Board of Supervisors hearing, where we also take public testimony and they'll share with you the results of their progress so far. And then they'll take that, the results of that hearing and fine-tune it a little bit further and then prepare the report for the board to provide them the range of options. And each one of those range of options will come with a budget, an estimated budget for both money and time, staffing, consulting, you know, so we can really get those numbers right. And once the board settles in on what they would like to do, one of those options or a combination of those options, the consultant in their contract will go back and prepare a very detailed budget and scope of work for the board. And so we are all going to be clear when we start out on what is sure to be a multi-year effort, you know, exactly what it is that we will be working on. And so that, that is the, the plan. So we have this process to just simply scope out what our general plan process will be. And so hopefully that will get us to stay on task and on budget and if we're all clear from the get-go what our, what our responsibilities are going to be. So this is all going to be rather fast over the next few months, so I just wanted to let you know that, you know, you'll be in, somebody will be contacting you, will share the flyers with you, and then we'll be contacting you to schedule a time. And so I'm not sure whether the time is going to be with you, maybe and the board member because there is a economy of scale that we need to reach with our consultants. There's a lot of stakeholders involved in these hour-long meetings. We want to make sure that we get the best use of time. So we're still trying to, to work on how that's going to work too. So if you have any questions for me on that, I'd be happy to take them. But I also, also wanted to report that the board of supervisors did approve the wireless ordinance that you recommended approval of. That was on a 3-1 vote with Supervisor Parks dissenting and Supervisor Foy was not here. So, but it did pass. We did hear kind of the same concerns from the ham radio operator. So we just decided that day, we set a meeting with them and so we're going to have a meeting with them. I believe it's scheduled for next week and we're just going to go down one by one and hear their concerns and then explain to them, you know, how the ordinance doesn't do them any harm because I think that there's just a lot of misinformation out there. So we want to kind of catch them right away before they forget or before we forget. So we're going to host that meeting and we're not going to let them leave the room until we can ensure that we have done that, no harm to that industry because I do not believe that we did in the, in the updating of that code. So that's what I have.
Okay. Any questions or requests of the director or staff?
Do we, excuse me, do we have a projected next meeting?
We don't have anything scheduled right now.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
The only question I have is, I'm hearing about the general plan update. Are there any significant elements that we're running up against a timeline like the housing element or traffic so that this, in other words, we're not trying to do it piecemeal, we can do it almost in one bite?
The only, there's not a timeline that the state requires you to keep, to update a general plan. So clearly we're going to bump up against our, the sunset period on ours is 2020. The only element that's required by state law is to, to keep updated is the housing element and our housing element is solid until 2021. So, yeah.
Okay. All right. Any, any other questions? If not, we'd like to welcome the, the new planner. We do have one basic rule, if you get complimented, you have to buy donuts for staff the next day. So just, just be forewarned, be forearmed. All right? If I hear nothing else with a go to the order, this meeting is now adjourned.